Workshop, our beating is called to order. City Manager Quoman, would you do our roll call?
Certainly. Councilmember Neblet.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Juneman.
Here.
Councilmember Knudsen.
Here.
And Mayor Abrams.
Here. Onto the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Moved by Smith, seconded by Juneman. Motion to approve the agenda. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion passes for the agenda. We have two items on tonight's agenda. One is the North End Vision Plan Discussion and we have the Capital Improvement Plan for 2020 and through 2024 overview tonight. Let's start with the North End Vision Plan. Mr. Martin, this is going to be you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we have Jay Dema present from the city's consultant firm, Perkins &amp; Will, that will walk through a presentation to provide the council an update on the progress and status of the North End Vision Plan. This plan did commence at the end of last summer, and we were last before council for a check-in in the fall. Most recently, we did hold an open house on May 29th where we had about 60 participants come in from the neighboring community to learn about the near and future or long-term vision plans for the North End. So Jay's going to provide a status of how we got there and where we're going and what those next steps are. I do want to point out that our team has been working with the Communications Department. We developed a video that talks about the North End process and what we're hoping to direct future development in this area. In recognition of time being limited tonight, we're not going to make you watch the video right now, but we will post it on our North End website that we hope that you get a moment to check that out and kind of see the production that was put together highlighting this process. So with that, I'll hand it over to Mr. Dema to walk through the presentation.
Good evening and welcome to our workshop.
Mayor.
Do you want to state your name and then?
Yeah, I'm Jay Dema with Perkins &amp; Will, and I've been the project manager, and I've been working with a team of colleagues of mine, as Mike said, since last fall on the North End Vision Plan, and I'm delighted to kind of come back and sort of stand before you and give, as Mike said, kind of an update. So, we have a presentation up. I think I'll be kind of the, here, I'll give the quick overview of what I'm going to talk about. So I'll talk about where we are in the process. There was a vision statement and a set of goals that were developed as part of this, and I'll kind of run through those because those are important. They set the foundation for a lot of the ideas that get presented in the vision plan. And I'll update you on the various community and stakeholder engagement that we've done throughout this process, and then probably focus time on kind of reviewing the basics of the vision plan, so you can see that if you have any questions about that. And then I'll probably culminate the presentation with introduction to the fact that this also includes a design guideline that we've been developing as part of this process. It's really seen as actually a step in implementation, and that's really the final piece of the work that still needs to get done and go over next steps. So, that's kind of the overview of what I want to talk to you about tonight. Obviously, if there's any questions folks have as we go about, certainly just let me know, and I'm happy to answer anything. So, just to go over the process, you know, this kicked off last summer. We did a lot of background analysis. We started to gather input in the fall, and then based on a lot of that input and the development of a vision plan, or a vision statement with goals, we started to craft some different concepts. And we worked with the North End Working Group to refine those. And then, as we sort of refined them based on input from the community, we started to achieve sort of a preferred vision plan. And then, we've been working through and developing these design guidelines, as I mentioned, and now as you can see on the lower right-hand corner of that slide, we're pretty close to kind of finishing this process. There's, we have to create this action plan and think about how best to implement it, and then really it's about rolling up the sleeves and starting to the process. So that's sort of the overall process as we kind of near the conclusion of this. And as I was saying before, we developed this vision statement based on an initial set of input from the community. I'll go ahead and I'll just quickly read this off because I think it kind of captures and it highlights a lot of the key principles that we're really trying to identify as part of this plan. So, "The North End is a local and regional economic activity center characterized by a diverse mix of sustainable land uses where people of all backgrounds can safely and easily come from near and far to gather for purposes of attaining goods and services, wellness, work, recreation, socialization, learning, and living." So it's really just a, it's a re-validation of the way that this area's been functioning for several decades, but it just recognizes the fact that we're, you know, the markets are changing, the community's changing, and we still want to be able to keep this area vibrant. How? Now, there are some key goals that we identified that we thought was important. First of all, promote redevelopment that brings people to the North End. So the idea that we know that the mall's going to be changing. We know that there are certain properties that will continue to, you know, meet their end but then be replaced by new uses. So we want to think about that redevelopment as reinforcing that vision. So it's about bringing people to the North End. This is an area that people not only come from Maplewood, but it's also throughout the whole northeast metro and even beyond that as well. And we want to be able to enhance multimodal mobility throughout the North End. We heard a lot from people throughout this process that, you know, walking or biking or doing other things besides driving throughout this area is very challenging. So we want to recognize that as things change. We want to be able to add those features and elements that can help people get around. And we want to better connect the North End just to the broader region, and I think part of this story is through the Rush Line BRT, the Bus Rapid Transit, and the planning that's going about for that. That's one of the ways that this area can continue to be connected to a broader area that facilitates being able to bring people to the North End. The fourth goal we cited was strengthening the North End as a hub for healthcare and wellness. This recognizes the importance of St. John's as a current anchor, but it also recognizes the fact that one of the biggest growing industries throughout the region and frankly, the state is healthcare. And the fact that we have this anchor already in place means that we can continue to kind of build on that and make this an important destination. We want to create more unique experiences for visitors because we know that the retail model over the 60s, 70s into the 80s just doesn't work anymore, and it's really about creating more experience. And we heard that not only from the community that came out and said, "We want more of this," we heard that from developers and other sort of folks involved in real estate, that that's a really important element. And number six, capitalize on an increasingly diverse population. We know that from the market study that was done last fall prior to this, and that diversity is on, it's on not only race and ethnicity, but it's also on age, it's on income, it's on a variety of different things. And we want to be able to recognize that and be able to not only recognize, but take advantage of that. And then the final North End goal that we have is create design guidelines for the North End. So it's really about thinking of all these different things, and at the end of the day, okay, when people come with development proposals, what is it that we have in place that can really provide a lot of clear direction to those, to the development community about where buildings should be placed, how they should be oriented to the street, how the streets fit function, how should our open space work? So, those are the big goals we set out. There's a number of strategies that we've been identifying that fall under each one of those, but those are really kind of set the stage for us to create a lot of ideas. All right, engagement. It's a multifaceted process. We did a lot of different things and a lot of different methods, and I'll go over the highlights. As I mentioned before, there was a working group. Many of you have participated in that in some way, shape, or form, and it has a number of members, and it's been made up with a very good cross-section of folks. So we not only have elected and appointed officials on that working group, but there's business owners and managers, there's residents from the North End, there's property owners, and there's other agency officials. They've met to date five different times since October. We have one more meeting scheduled here in just a couple of weeks to hopefully culminate all the hard work and effort that they've done. So you can see some of the great images, some of the really kind of neat work that we've been doing with the working group, with various exercises and activities. All right, so, the North End, obviously, a commercial and business enterprise is a really big foundation to this part of the city, so business outreach was really critical, and we were really committed to doing this in a very big way. Ling Becker, who's no longer consultant, she wasn't a consultant, she was, well, just for the sake of her, Ling was a consultant who was also working in the City of Aden Site, so she took a new position, but in the early stages of this, for the first several months, Ling just did a bang-up job just getting out to the community. As you can see, she partnered a lot with the White Bear Area and the St. Paul Area Chamber of Commerce to kind of spread the word and the message about the project and to get word out. She did over 150 drop-in visits with businesses throughout the whole North End area, just saying, "Here's a handout. We've got this project going. If you've got any questions, follow up with me." And those did turn into a number of actually ad hoc meetings for her, and we learned a lot of great things. And then, she also arranged for a number of businesses to actually do roaming tables or traveling displays where she brought sort of these little, you know what, you might find at a typical open house, but you set it up in a vestibule or a foyer or a lunchroom or something like that in different businesses, and someone could be there just to answer questions, offer handouts and things like that as well. So we did a lot of work to reach out to businesses. And some of the general feedback we heard from folks was, as you could understand, being a business owner, you'd like to see the idea of a bigger mix of stores, more diversity. They talked about apparel, more destinations, independent businesses. Folks even cited partnerships with Century College and other institutions nearby that could maybe have a presence in the North End. And they even talked about improved bike and pedestrian connections being important for their operations. And in some ways tied to that accessibility into the North End, we heard from some of the businesses that, you know, sometimes it's hard to get workers to the area, whether it's through transit or other modes as well. So that was kind of the highlights of what we had heard from getting out and reaching out to the businesses. We also utilized various online platforms, one of which was this website called Social Pinpoint, where it was a really kind of neat, interactive way that folks could go to this website, and they could actually start to pick and write comments and direct them onto maps and images. We've done a couple different exercises at the beginning of the planning process. We invited people to post some of their favorite images of places that they really think are neat, that share a lot of characteristics with the North End area. And then we actually have the current short and long-term planning visions up on this Social Pinpoint, and we've been promoting that through the city's Facebook website and other means to drive people to that area to be able to comment. So if you can't make it to an open house or a more traditional way, this is another way to gather input. Here's just some great images that folks posted saying, "This is stuff that I think is fantastic and I think might work in the North End." So it's just a lot of wonderful visualization to just help kind of move our ideas along. We also did an online survey. We had close to 120 respondents. Again, this was something that was on the project's website, the city here. We promoted it through Facebook as well as a lot of the business outreach on our handouts. We were informing people about, "Hey, go online, answer this survey." Based on the, we asked folks how they kind of identified themselves, and about 50% said they were residents of the North End. We had a handful of employees. There were about a little over a third were visitors or customers, and then we had a smattering of folks who identified themselves as property owners or landlords, business managers, others. I just want to quickly qualify that sometimes, you know, like look at a survey like this and go, 118 that maybe doesn't sound like a whole lot, but in my experience of doing this and just generally reaching out to people just out of their goodwill to say, "Hey, can you take five, 10 minutes out of your life and respond to this?" And even though you kind of pepper people and you remind them, frankly, 118 respondents is really a pretty good rate of response. I can't claim that that's going to statistically say that we can know something in particular, but it does give us a lot of really great qualitative information. So, so some of the highlights that we actually did learn from folks through the survey, we asked them to talk about sort of the biggest strengths and challenges in the area, what they would like to see changed, what they don't want to see changed. There definitely was, as you could imagine, a lot of concern around sort of the future of the mall and just retail in general. So that was kind of generally captured. But you can also see here in some of these comments, people again, talking about green space, the walkability issues, the being able to have more housing, for example, in the area, and the importance of the role of the mall and healthcare. So these were all things that we were capturing as part of the survey. We also asked folks to rate how important they felt certain factors were when thinking about the future of the North End. And this was really interesting because we, 90% of the people felt that redevelopment of underutilized properties was extremely important or very important. And then, building on parking lots was the second highest rated one. So people looked at that landscape and really felt that there was opportunity here to bring new things, new development, new uses into the North End. Nevertheless, there was really some strong comments around, you know, safe connections for pedestrians as well as bicycles and just beautifying the environment and creating more public gathering areas. So yeah, so we got a lot of great input from that tool as well. And as Mike mentioned, we held an open house last week. We had about 60 folks come out. Overall, folks who came to the table where we had the vision plans laid out were actually very positive, and a lot of the feedback that we did heard was really constructive, a lot of great ideas about like more bicycle parking, ideas around more rest areas, active uses in the parks, for example, and just creating event space. By and large, a lot of that we felt was somehow accommodated in the plan, but it was really great to hear that these were things that were people coming out to the open house. They were kind of verifying what others had mentioned. There was a pretty good contingent from the Cardinal Point Senior Cooperative, and they had some concerns around the BRT. We were able to listen to those, but the good thing was is we had Ramsey County staffed a table out there, and they were out there representing the BRT, and they were answering questions about that. So hopefully folks were able to get all the information that they needed regarding that. Now, there's another element to this about major stakeholders, and this was something that, I'm going to preface this by saying, you know, a lot of the biggest property owners in the area obviously have a really key influence on this. And I know back in the fall when we came to kind of update the city council on this, there were a lot of questions about, "Hey, what about the folks in the mall?" And we were saying, "You know what? We're in the process of reaching out to those folks." We slowed up our process over the late winter, early spring, so that we could make sure that we could really engage these folks as much as possible. As you can imagine, a lot of them are out of town, not in this area. It took quite a bit of needling and badgering, but you know what? We did actually get ahold of folks and have some good conversations. I'm going to give you some of the highlights of those. I'm going to start here with Kohl's. We were able to get in front of some representatives from Kohl's. They didn't have any immediate plans to change anything about their actual business. So, as a matter of fact, they felt that their Maplewood location was a real strong location for them, a good performing store. They really liked the idea of more housing in the area over time. They just felt that that was something that just strengthens their market. Some of the initial sketches, which is what we kind of sent along to these property owners to kind of hope stimulate and motivate them if they start to look at plans. They have since been refined nevertheless, but it was interesting how the representative from Kohl's was, you know what, I get it. We're dealing and we're seeing this all across the country as far as folks trying to reimagine the malls, and we try to be a partner as part of this process as much as possible. But as far as they're concerned for now, they don't have any plans to do anything differently with their space. So, in the near term, there's probably not a lot of opportunity to think about that particular part of the mall, but it's encouraging to see that, you know, they may become an interesting partner down the road, especially when they see the value in how some of the other ideas that are reflected in the plan might be of some benefit to them.
Can I just interrupt one point because I've been part of the North End Study, and I discovered something that I think many of our residents don't know, is that when you think of the mall and you think of the owners of the mall, you mistakenly believe that they own the entire mall, and that's not the case. What I learned through participating in the North End Study is that Sears is actually owned, well, now it's owned by Seritage.
Yeah.
J.C. Penney's owns their building and the perimeter, the parking that they have. Kohl's owns their building and the parking they have. Macy's owns their building and the parking that they have. So Washington Prime Group really owns the common areas that connect the four anchor stores, but they don't own the four, the property of the four anchor stores. So it really means that there are five different entities that own the Maplewood Mall, which makes it a little bit more complex.
Yeah, probably very complex in some ways. And I'll talk a little bit about Seritage and Washington Prime Group because those are two entities we did talk to. We, and this is jumping to a slide that appears a little bit later, but it might be appropriate to talk about it. One of the things we had available as an exhibit at the open house last week was talking about how our plans show a particular, you know, short and long-term vision for the mall, but we recognize the fact that with five separate owners, you know, a plan that the consultants that are working with the city comes up with may not necessarily match up with that, you know, how that unfolds. And so what we did is we created a graphic to illustrate how depending on how these owners all interact over time, there could be different paths to, you know, changing and evolving the mall, one of which could be the mall entirely goes away. You know, if you lose a couple more anchors, you might have somebody who's incentivized to buy the entire thing and maybe redevelop from scratch. And there was a, we showed a case study last fall that there's been other malls in the country that have certainly have done that. Nevertheless, we wanted to illustrate how in each of those different scenarios, we wanted to be able to see the evolution and the change, adhere to our vision statement and our goals for the area so that we're still, you know, meeting a lot of those principles.
Thank you.
So yeah, thank you for bringing that up. With that, maybe I'll talk a little bit about our conversation with Seritage. So, it took a little bit of back and forth to get in front of them. They, the representative I met there who's responsible for this particular property is based out of Cleveland, and had admitted that, you know what, I have not been to that asset, as they call it, but yet they were curious to learn more. They would actually, at the time, express some interest in maybe being a part of the working group, even though recognizing that it's kind of challenging if you're in Cleveland to, you know, come on a regular basis. But it was definitely this, you know, hey, it was a message to them. The city's getting serious about looking about this area, so we Seritage need to get serious about it as well. They asked about if we'd done any research around it. I said, "You know what? We did do a market study. Directed them to the market study and the project website." They said to us, "You know what? I think we might put a couple of our own research folks on this so I can learn a little bit more about this property." And even as we were kind of conversing with Washington Prime Group, they said, "You know what? We're in malls with those guys as well all over the country, and what's interesting," they said, "is they tend to kind of follow what we do." Seritage tends to be more capitalized than Washington Prime Group, so they kind of sit back and go, "Okay, what are you guys doing?" And then we'll kind of follow suit. But yet they do, they do talk to one another, and at some point, we were actually discussing the ability for them to both come into the Twin Cities at the same time and all be in their room together. But unfortunately, we just couldn't delay the process indefinitely for them to make that happen. Nevertheless, they know, Mike, and hopefully Jeff, you'll eventually get to know and meet these folks, that those conversations can continue along. But specifically to the Sears site, they don't have any immediate plans right now. It was kind of on their back burner, but it sounds like their interest in kind of putting it to the front burner was definitely there. And they tried to impress upon us that, hey, you know, we've got a track record of doing some kind of cool and innovative things in some of the other malls that we've been working with our properties on as well. So it's, you know, we have some ideas that are in place for them to kind of react to and kind of respond to, but I think they understood that this is a vision plan and that they, you know, they've really been kind of invited to be a part of it, so. Washington Prime Group, again, they don't have any immediate plans right now, as I said, and, you know, the Sears folks kind of hinted at the fact that, yeah, I think they're kind of following and waiting for us to make some decisions. But this process has also stimulated them. The, their local property manager was technically part of the working group that we had set up, but I'm certain because they manage other properties in other states as well, that it probably was just difficult and challenging for them to actually be a part of it. But we did have a conversation with them, you know, which was helpful to know that they don't have anything immediately going on right now, but they're looking to this process to help learn from it. Macy's and J.C. Penney, we put out multiple invites for them to participate, never actually heard back from them. The folks at Seritage said, you know, "It's really not surprising." Again, they're in malls with them all over the country, and they said that more than likely, that just means that they don't have any immediate plans to do anything either. If they did, they probably would reach out. So, that's sort of their particular situation. We're just assuming that they don't have anything going on. Bertrand Station, this was a bit of a battle. It took me a while. The local real estate broker that represents the property was kind enough to kind of be an intermediary for a while and kept pushing property owner, and we did actually finally get on the phone with them. And this was kind of an interesting and timely call. They divulged the fact that they're, they don't have any immediate plans for the property, but they know that this property has some challenges for them within their portfolio. And so, they're going to start seriously looking at what sort of options they have. They said that they are not a development company, so it's not in their necessarily wheelhouse to wheelhouse to start the process of thinking about and redeveloping, you know, their property, but they said that they do consistently partner with developers in the local markets that they're in, and kind of play a partnership in that way. The initial sketches that we sort of showed them about some of the potential change in the area, they were initially a little concerned about the fact that there wasn't as much retail as the Bertrand Station is right now, but we were trying to impress upon them to say that, you know what, we actually see this area as, retail does not entirely go away, but it might be mixed in with more housing and residential options. And they understood that, they understood that point. And so as I understand, they've actually been in conversation with city staff. They've actually reached out, and it sounds like they may continue to have additional conversations as they move forward with this property. So that was kind of exciting to hear from them. And we did actually schedule a meeting, a particular meeting with St. John's Hospital and the leadership there. They've been represented on the working group, but they were, you know, willing to listen and play primarily a listening role in that capacity, but they had some initial concerns about our first round of sketches that we drew up. They noted that they didn't have any immediate plans for any major changes, but yet they recognized, I think there's a women's healthcare center that they're looking, might be something of interest for them down the road, and so some of our plans reflect where that might appear. There's just general concern around parking for them, because they feel that they have parking issues, and that, yet, one of their benefits is that they don't charge for parking, like a lot of the other hospital complexes, particularly in the Health East and Fairview system do, so they feel that they're able to capture some people because of that. So we wanted to respect that in the short term, they probably don't have any, even though they got a lot of great land to do some really neat things with, they may not be making any initial decisions. But yet, they understand, and because they were part of the working group process, I think they're very, very receptive to understanding that over time, there's clearly some visioning here that makes sense for them. So, any questions about our outreach here to the stakeholders? Okay, we'll just keep pushing forward.
We have a question from the councilman.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for all this hard work. I know I was one of the people that was most vocal about the mall situation, and so I really do appreciate this feedback. When it comes to what we're hearing from Washington Prime and Seritage, do we have a feeling for, I mean, how candid really are they able to be with what their plans are? And, you know, as a business, it's sometimes if you are considering a sale or a divestiture or anything like that, it might not be in your interest to share that publicly, and knowing that this would be something coming to city government, it's bound to be public. You know, I don't mean to negate the feedback we got from them, but I just, I, it feels like if I were in their shoes, I may not share everything that was happening until I was ready to share it publicly. Is that fair?
That's a very fair statement, and I think you have to recognize that with any, you know, major property owner, particularly if it's a commercial property, that there will be, to some degree, them holding their cards close to their chest, you know, for a variety of reasons, and we understand that. I think in the case of Seritage, when we finally got in touch with them, though, it did seem genuine that, because they said, look, we're trying to figure out what to do with 200 properties across the country, and this one frankly just wasn't at the top of our list. But us reaching out to them about this process did really bring it right in front of them. And there was, when they mentioned in our conversations with them, I think I might have one of our research folks start to dig in a little bit more about this market. And that statement in and of itself could have been, again, a little bit of like, well, maybe they're just saying this to be kind, but they followed up with city staff about information that was available, so that, and that was not the person we talked to. So it was someone else started to get and take interest in this in their organization. So I think that that was probably a fairly genuine statement, that it was, you know, yeah, no, it's not on our radar, but now that you talk about it, I think we probably need to start putting it on our radar. And there was some conversations with them about them coming into town, visiting, us actually having a sit-down meeting with them, and unfortunately, despite us kind of gently saying, hey, you think you might be doing that? You know, we'd love to accommodate you in any way possible, it just never got around to happening. Doesn't mean that, even though they've shown this initial interest and they did some initial checking, that maybe they'll slow up on the process once again, but I think, I think if there's, you know, check-ins with them, they might be more willing to kind of talk to the city, so.
Eric, right?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Not surprising with Seritage, really, their raison d'etre in the world is to monetize empty Sears buildings right now. And so they're clearly in that mode of figuring out how to monetize those places. I think my bigger concern would be with the Washington Primes and maybe Coles, I feel like Coles has pretty good business there, but I think we just need to be careful to hear from them, something like, we have no current plans, and then feel like that's a long-term commitment to staying in Maplewood and a long-term commitment to the building. Like, to me, that's a, at this very moment that you're talking to me commitment, not very long after that. Is that a fair way to interpret that?
I, yeah, yeah. You know, sometimes the strategy that we employed by creating a very initial set of sort of sketches, and we kept them really loose, based on the input from the working group and all the community input, and then sending them out to these folks, the intent was to kind of, you know, like, whoa, you're showing something on my property. And that worked in a couple instances. Believe me, it did. But, you know, if they had any really short-term issues that they felt that that might be a conflict with, that probably would have motivated them to say otherwise, but that doesn't mean that, you know, I don't know what their idea of short-term might be, you know, right? I mean, as far as we know, it could be 12 months from now. Probably the challenge here is because of the press surrounding both Macy's and J.C. Penney, I don't know so much Macy's as of late, but J.C. Penney's, of course, that, you know, that's just overall a stressed, you know, entity. In that environment, they're probably not going to tell anyone anything. And, you know, and we just don't, we just don't know that, unfortunately. So, you know, we come up with plans and ideas that, you know, if that property becomes vacant, there's something different that can happen there, so.
Absolutely. Well, thank you very much.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Oh, it kind of jumped ahead on me. So what I'm going to do with this, let's see, which direction am I going here? I'm going backward, sorry. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to get my head on straight and get to the right spot here. All right, so what I'm going to do is just show you the vision sketches overall real quickly, and then I'll talk about some of the components to them, and then we can have a discussion around it. So this is the, what we call near-term potential, and the reason why we called this near-term is obviously a lot of the change that we're showing is something that will take, you know, many potentially decades to happen, if you look at other communities where they redevelop mall areas. But we looked at these particular parcels and properties and thought, because of their current state, whether they're vacant, whether we know that there's stressed properties going on, we felt that these are areas that are most likely to change in the near term, and these were an opportunity to really introduce what ended up becoming a key element to all of the different sketches and ideas, and that was an east-west connection between St. John's Hospital and the mall area. We heard that from our very first meeting of the working group. We had maps, and people were scribbling things, and I think on more than one map, someone drew lines connecting, directly connecting the hospital to the mall. And that meets a lot of real good, strong, basic planning principles in general, especially around mobility and access and things like that. So this is a way in which you can see some of the, what could be short-term change, and an opportunity to, in the short term, actually introduce that new east-west connection between the mall and the hospital. And then, this is then now going over to the long-term, imagining some environment where most of the anchors have been, you know, redeveloped into something different or reused, but the core part of the mall may have remained. We see entirety of Bertrand Station going away, as well as some of the peripheral smaller retail properties as well, and just kind of introducing this entire new sort of pattern, so to speak, with more smaller blocks, so there's more connections that can be made, both walking and biking, as well as vehicular to circulate throughout this area. We're looking at, and there's a lot of housing here, but some of which, in key certain placements and locations, you might have retail on the ground floor, and we have a variety of other uses. There's periodic office areas closer to the hospital, there's lodging, again, here positioned close to the hospital where that would really draw on that synergy from the hospital as well. So you can sort of see this build-out pattern. And then some of the ways to kind of convey this is the importance of, first and foremost, the transportation and the potential future for the Rush Line BRT, and how that would influence this area. So you're kind of, here we're kind of looking at a 3D way, you can kind of see that map previously, and now we're kind of putting you up on bird's eye. We also paid a lot of attention here to the street hierarchy, and some of these areas in blue are identifying what may be more sort of secondary road systems, the green being the primary roads that are already in place, and how these new connections might function to kind of go through and throughout the North End. We kind of looked at and building on that the pedestrian and multimodal, so we can see some areas where obviously new sidewalk connections can be made, improved street crossings, and potentially raised crossings at some particularly challenging intersections as well, so you can see how that sort of network could begin to be introduced. And then the opportunities for more green space and those types of open space amenities, where we can see small pocket parks, or we have streets that really sort of function almost more park-like as well, and introducing a lot more of a tree canopy. I don't know how many times people talked about just how, you know, the open parking lots are just so kind of just psychologically challenging to just kind of deal with, especially when they're not being used. So this idea of bringing in more tree canopy. Here, we're kind of giving you a little bit of a better sense or taste of how, what kind of level of intensity of the development might happen, things ranging from two, two-and-a-half stories all the way, generally up, we're imagining this is probably capping most buildings at six stories, because that's a point at which, if you go taller than that, you have to go to a much more expensive form of construction. The hotel that we thought that's probably in sort of maybe an eight-story structure, perhaps. This, again, none of this was intended to be prescriptive, it's just meant to show that, you know, this is the way that this, the pattern, and the shape and the feel and the density of, you know, introducing new roads and new opportunities for development sites, and supported by design guidelines and ultimately a regulatory environment, you might see this sort of, sort of character and feel sort of emerge over time. And then dealing with parking, whether that's in perhaps new parking, structured parking in the form of a ramp or garage, as well as strategic surface parking that's hidden from the streets by and large, but yet it functions so that it's, it can be more globally distributed. So you've got perhaps a system where the surface parking is actually shared, and it's not just dedicated to that one particular use on that site.
We have a question, Councilmember Neblet.
Thank you, Mayor. In terms of parking, are there bicycle parking included in this?
You're not seeing that on this map, but one of the design guidelines that we are recommending are that, you know, new structures and buildings somehow accommodate bicycle parking. And that was something we heard from not only folks on the working group, but then through a lot of our comments as well. So I would like to think that through the design guidelines, we would illustrate, or we would be, you know, strongly indicating that that would be a desired goal of new development, be to have that present pretty much as part of any new project. It's not shown here, and generally the scale, I think it'd be really difficult to indicate specifically where on the map you might find new bicycle parking, but I think the intent would be that with any of these buildings that are shown here, they would have some bicycle, you know, parking element to it. And I would think that it would be such that over time, you could add bicycle parking. You know, if in an early-stage development, you know, you don't have a, you know, you don't want to do 150 bike racks, but maybe you want to do 20, but you could accommodate that over time.
Okay, thank you.
And this is the diagram I was mentioning earlier that we had available at the open house, for folks to just visualize different alternatives in which the mall could evolve over time. And you can see the bottom one is one in which one owner gets control of the mall, probably tears it all down, and then they sort of slowly over time introduce a new road network, develop on those lots, and then at some point in the future, the entire mall area has been redeveloped. Other scenarios, imagine that, you know, there could be new uses that could be happening in some of these vacant areas, whether that's schools, clinics, you know, adventure zones, something related to animals. I mean, there's a variety of different government services, I mean, there's lots of different examples of how these malls are getting adapted and reused. And I'm going to bring up real quickly, we attended a recent seminar in the Twin Cities a couple weeks ago, and a representative of Simon Properties, which is one of the biggest mall owners in the country, actually talked about how they're gearing up to be more supportive of the old department stores actually going away, because that just gives them a lot more flexibility to be kind of innovative and creative on what to do with those old spaces. So that's kind of a signal that the department store model is the one that's probably taking the biggest brunt right now in our retail environment, and some folks are thinking about, yeah, get rid of them, and then that can free us up to do some really cool things. All right, so with that, any questions about the, I might as well just jump to the long-term one. If there's any specific questions about the, you know, vision sketch, we're trying to be careful here. Unlike a true sort of master plan, this is, we don't want this to be particularly prescriptive, because we know that this change is going to take time, and a lot of it's going to be dependent on private property owners and where they are in their decision-making process. But this is really an illustration to show how our vision statement, our goals, and the design guidelines that we've developed could be sort of, this is an example of how those things are met. So, any questions or comments? Well, if not, then, probably in the interest of time, I know you guys have another important agenda item, so we can keep moving on. I'm going to, I'm pretty much done with the presentation, but I'll just touch on this idea of the design guidelines and go over them real quickly as to kind of what they are.
You have one question before you move on, Councilmember Knez.
Yes, one question, great.
Thank you, Mayor. Joining this process a little late, but I'm just wondering, have you estimated any total cost of this?
No, we have not gone to that step. Not too high behind this, but technically it wasn't the scope of the work to actually go to that step. I think in the implementation section, which we're in the process of still working on, I think there'll be some very sort of magnitude of scale of figures that we'll be able to apply, so folks can start to kind of, you know, see that, what that might be. In particular, from the public side, you know, new streets, new other, you know, parks and things like that all come with cost, and that there can be, you know, as I said, I think there could be some numbers. I think there could be some numbers there that can help kind of illuminate that. You know, but yet again, it's a little bit of a dicey road to start putting numbers on something when we're really talking about a vision plan. And it's not a more prescriptive plan to say, this is where the next piece of development needs or should go, and we want the city to really be, you know, very, very proactive about perhaps acquiring that land or doing whatever with a partner at this point. Because at that point, when you're getting into discussions with potential development partners or public-private, you know, relationships, then the money thing is front and center, and that becomes a key negotiating point. So I would hate to see some numbers that would like scare people off because that's not their intent at this point.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. The design guidelines. So there's standards and guidelines that are really going to be needed to, you know, hopefully improve the aesthetic and functional quality of the built environment. We took that out of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. That was a really big key element to see and understand that the quality of some of the built environment is going to improve. And so that was kind of the strong basis for this. We've broken down the design guidelines into three different sort of elements. The first one is related to street design, so it's talking about rights of way and sidewalk easements. At the Open House, the top image on this slide is what we call sort of a street cross-section. And this is as sort of new streets might get introduced into this area. This would be a cross-section that would accommodate multimodal, that tree canopy. It would be allowing on-street parking and just two road lanes to sort of maintain kind of a smaller, more slower speed pattern. So that's kind of the idea of some of those ideas or guidelines in there. And we had a number of these different cross-sections presented in the, at the Open House, showing not only new streets, but even over time, working with the county and other roadway owners as they sort of update and revise their roadways. This is something to consider, is aspiring to, to help kind of overall benefit things. So, but other things, you know, stormwater management, I mean, as you know, Maplewood's a leader in that area. This is obviously a great opportunity, addressing paving and lighting, the canopy, car and bike parking, not only at the buildings, but then also along sort of the public realm areas as well, and dealing with loading areas. There's just the stuff around building design, just the overall bulk and massing, how buildings are sort of scaled and organized, entrances, setbacks, how they perform, and that directly relies on sustainability and some of those factors. Actually, I was going to comment back on the street side. A lot of our design guidelines align with your current policies around, you know, being environmentally friendly. So, so building design and then open space design guidelines, recognizing there's larger and smaller, different types of open space and how those can play an important role. So finally, our next steps, we'll address these implementation strategies. We're in the process of also beginning to kind of assemble parts of the vision plan document. And as I said before, we're going to meet June 26th with the working group. We'll go over a draft of the document and do probably prioritize some of the recommendations so that we can help formulate the implementation. And then if all goes as planned, we'll finalize the document in July.
Thank you very much, councilmembers. Any other questions? Thank you.
Great, all right, thank you very much.
Very comprehensive report, I appreciate it. The next agenda item, we have our capital improvement plan. Ms. Paul Seth, this is yours.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers.
Good evening.
We're really excited about being here tonight. We know we have a short time to complete this, so we're going to try to get through it as quickly as possible. We're going to depart a little bit from our normal procedure about delivering this presentation. My colleague Steve Love is going to be joining us tonight because we've got some new things, new and exciting things to present to you, and he's a big part of it. So we'll get right into it. You also have a draft CIP included with your packets. I know you haven't had time to read it all, but we're going to try to hit on the important aspects of it tonight so that if you do decide to read it, you'll know what to look for. Okay, we've got the PowerPoint up. We have a new clicker here tonight, so I see our last speaker managed it very well. But if I happen to freeze up the show, I'll hand it to Steve. He'll always figure it out. So I'll give it a shot. It's got some new features and may or may not try to use them. So again, for some of you, this is an old hat. We've been through this, but we have a couple of new councilmembers, so I want to go through some of the same old slides so that everybody understands what the objectives are for tonight and how we arrived at, you know, some of the things that we were presenting. So tonight, it would be expected that the council would give us some feedback on the priorities that we have shown for these projects. Give us any kind of comments that you have about the projects included in the entire plan, but particularly for the year 2020, because those are the projects that are going to move forward to the budget process and be part of the 2020 budget. Doesn't mean that you still don't get a chance to vote on them before they happen, but they are the ones, it's one more step in the process. And then we have some new things to discuss with you tonight, a new funding model for streets discussion, and that's going to be our primary role tonight is to, we're going to focus on that primarily tonight. But we will cover everything else just a little bit quicker. Again, this is a repeat from last year, a little bit about the process. We start out at the top, the capital needs identification is ongoing. We have inventories of our equipment on a life cycle basis. We have inventories of every mile, lane mile of road on a life cycle basis. We know when these things are coming up for replacement, so we keep those things up to date. That then moves into a long-range strategic plan. We look for funding sources. Once we find the funding sources, then we move it into our five-year CIP. Even though we're carrying a 10-year CIP, we're only going to present five for publication. And then that, whatever goes, gets adopted as part of the five-year CIP goes into the annual capital budget for that year. And every year, we run through this again so that you have a chance to reprioritize everything that happens in the five-year period. But each step kind of solidifies the projects as they move forward. It's never the final until you vote on the final and until we implement it, but each step moves it just a little bit closer to happening. And I'm going to spend a little bit of time on this slide because I want especially the new members to kind of understand why we're placing the emphasis on where we are tonight. And it really all starts with the financing. So there are several different categories of improvements. The first one is vehicles and equipment. For the most part, we're on a pay-as-you-go system. We have a great system. We have a fleet fund set up that replenishes itself based on the amount of depreciation on an annual basis. If there is a vehicle, for instance, our public safety vehicles, particularly our fire vehicles, we haven't got quite as good of a system set up for those, and we are working on that. But there will be a ladder truck in the five-year CIP plan that's close to $1 million. We don't, we won't be able to, you know, pay for that on a pay-as-you-go basis, obviously, because we haven't planned for that yet. We are working on that. So we will use what's called a master tax exempt lease agreement, very low interest rates over a period of time, and we've used that in the past, and it's a very good alternative to pay-as-you-go. The second, building improvements. We have a building fund. It really doesn't have any money in it, but we'll talk a little bit about that more later. We have identified, you know, a way to improve the fund balance in that fund as our debt service payments are falling off. We're able to capture that capacity and levy money, and this will be presented in the, for the 2020 budget process. We'll be able to levy money for those building funds so that we will be able to do projects like roof replacements, any other kind of maintenance, other than building a brand-new building. We should be able to handle all the maintenance projects. Do you think of any new ones that?
So you could have anything from roof replacements, you could have floor finishings, you could have HVAC system, you know, our heat and cooling system, so it could be a lot of those type of things.
So going forward, we feel that we are going to have enough funds at $200,000 a year funding level to handle all of those improvements that we formally borrowed for. Anything larger than that, brand-new building would require debt. So streets and infrastructure, that's where we're going to spend most of our time tonight because that's where most of the money goes, and that's where most of the debt gets issued. So we have, you know, we have four different sources, you know, debt, the franchise fees, which were recently increased, which has really helped the situation, local government aid, which has recently been increased, which is also really playing a large part tonight, and property taxes. That's another form of, so we're going to talk in depth about that because that's where most of the money is going, and we'll show you that on a slide, and that's where we're looking at a new, kind of a new system. And so we're going to really focus on what the main policy issue is, and that's with our streets and infrastructures. The rest of the things are, you know, fairly, they're kind of business as usual. I hate to say that. We're not trying to take the focus off of any of those things, we just, we have limited time tonight. Park improvements as well, we're still sticking to the $1 million a year. We've got $5 million included for park improvements. Like to do more, but we'll talk more about that later. That's mostly financed through park dedication fees, but there will also be some debt. And again, last but not least, redevelopment. We will be issuing some tax increment financing bonds. We have left some room for redevelopment. It's still very loose. We don't really know what's happening yet in the Gladstone neighborhood or any of the other development areas, but we have left some room to be able to issue some tax increment financing debt for those redevelopment opportunities that we know that you're going to want to move forward with. Very quickly, as quickly as I can, the principles that we keep in mind when we're trying to develop this plan for you and these options for you, I want to say, if I can just mention really quickly, how wonderful it is to do this in such a high-functioning organization. And it really starts with the council and their unified vision and strategies that are provided to us. And if you've ever worked in an organization where the council is not unified and doesn't have strategies, you will know what I'm talking about. We then have a city manager and city senior management team who have a high level of awareness about these visions and set of plans, very, very solid understanding, and work very cohesively as a team in implementing the strategic plan. So it's very much a pleasure to be able to put this together in an organization like this. We focused a lot on council priorities. We know that you want debt reduction, and we know that you want street improvements. We worked really hard to find that balance. We've been promising you, this is the same slide as last year, that we're going to leverage local government aid. You'll see that happen more than before tonight, and that we're going to continue to work towards pay-as-you-go. You're going to see more of that also tonight. We also wanted to present you something that was sustainable, that we could move forward with, and not to forget about economic development. We know we have to take care of what we have, but we also wanted to leave some room for that, so lots of areas to balance. And that being kind of the key theme for tonight, we really had a lot of work, especially between Steve and I, balancing the council's goals for debt reduction and street improvements. And there's one, a couple of instances that Steve will discuss in a little bit, where we had to put debt reduction aside for a year for the sake of its expediency. We had street improvements that were more important for that particular year, but we did not abandon debt reduction at all. We were just trying to make the best possible decisions for you so that you could have, you know, the best information that you could to make those decisions. Did you want to add to that?
Yep, and I would say this is like one of the toughest equations we have to solve, right? How do you have less debt and do more projects? So we'll be referencing this back to this slide a few times, finding that balance point.
Quickly, the timeline. We'll also be presenting to the Planning Commission. They need to decide if all of these projects fit within the Comprehensive Plan framework and any other regulations or ordinances that they might be in charge of. And then the City Council will have a hearing and have an adoption when we adopt the final budget. And I do it this way because we want the 2020 projects to align with the 2020 budget. We want to make sure that we get them as closely as possible, and there could be some changes that happen between now and then depending on the feedback that we get from you all. Very quickly, the purpose of having a capital improvement plan. We have a planning document for five years, but we plan out for 10 years, and even in some cases, 15. That helps us to know where we're at in that five-year period. It really gives us a roadmap to tell us what we're doing today and in this five years, what it's going to look like in 10 and 15 years, and it really helps to keep us on a sustainable level. It's also a legal requirement in order to issue debt to finance capital improvement projects, so this is all going to be part of that legal requirement.
Ms. Paul Seth, can I just interrupt you for just one moment? And this is really for the benefit for our new councilmembers. The three more senior councilmembers are very familiar with our asset management plan, which was new when I started on the council. I think now, well, it's not so new now. Maybe it's five years old or four years old, something like that. Prior to that time, we, do you want to maybe explain it? You can, Mr. Love, you're very familiar with it. Because when I was reviewing the documents this weekend, the council packet, I was thinking about that asset management plan, and I think that that's important for everyone on the council to realize that the recommendations for the fire truck or the different park improvements come down to our asset management plan because I think that's really one of the fundamental documents that really drives this. So can you just do just a short little?
Mayor and council, so we implemented an asset management program called Cartograph. It's a software that we use for this, and we essentially have all our assets in it. As you mentioned, it could be anywhere from land to parking lots to utilities to equipment to our facilities. And what this does is allows us to know exactly what we have, the condition it's in. So as we start looking at what improvements need to be done or what should be included in the plan, we can prioritize things both based off of funding and as well as the current conditions.
Thank you. That way, councilmembers, we can plan if we're going to need a new roof somewhere or if we're going to need a new fire truck. We know that it's coming, it's not any big surprise.
Absolutely.
So thank you for that.
So with this slide, what I really wanted you to take away is that the total five-year CIP is just about $70 million. Again, street improvements are $47 million of that, so almost 68%. You'll note that building improvements are 11%. That's typically not the case, but what we have included is, you know, roughly a $7 million fire station, new fire station or rehabbed fire station, whatever it might end up being. So that is included in the 2020 CIP. We know that hasn't been acted on yet, but it's there because we know it's in the works and it can be moved around. You'll always have the final say on it, but it is in the plan. It is in our debt projections that we're going to be showing you in a little bit. But again, the main takeaway there is that the streets are the biggest part of this plan. The park improvements, we're trying to stay true to the $1 million a year recommendation from the master plan study. We're at 5.2 million in expenditures for parks, so we hope that we're meeting the needs for the community there. The funding sources, 38% roughly is going to come from debt, from new debt, GO bonds. And what's different about this is each year that we've shown you this now in the last couple, three years, the amount that's coming from debt in the total five-year CIP is less and less. And you'll see more coming from governmental funds, primarily because that's where, that's where the franchise fees are coming from, from another governmental fund. And the enterprise funds really are utility contributions. We, you know, we no longer are, and that's a change too, we no longer are issuing debt on the utility component of the project. We've analyzed our utility funds. We've asked you for a couple of small rate increases, and you've granted them, and we've got this planned out for the next 10 years. All of these projects that you're going to see and hear, the utility component will be paid for with cash from the utility funds, no debt on the utilities. Intergovernmental revenue has increased because we have local government aid that we're going to be adding. And we just want to show you last year's chart so that you can see the reduction in debt. It was 42% last year. Now we're showing you this year, the 38% in debt. And in last year, it was reduced from, I don't remember if it was 48, something like that, but it's so, for the, at least the second year in a row, if not the third, we're relying less on debt. This is incremental progress, but it is progress.
So just to kind of add on what that geo-bonding is used for, you have your full street reconstruction projects, so you'll have bonding for part of the project costs, but also bonding for assessments. And in our street reclamation projects, you have franchise fees. franchise fee instead of geo-bonding for project costs, but you still have debt for assessments on that.
Okay, very quickly, our projections with the CIP, with the debt that we're proposing to go with the CIP. And we'll get into this in a little more, you know, we're talking a lot about debt reduction, and so we're going to tell you exactly how we arrived at which projects were going to get done, and how much debt was going to be reduced. But we're looking at, in this five-year period, doing these projects, but our debt will go from 59 million to 49 million. So, you know, we did tell you, we've been telling you a million dollars a year, and now you're seeing it. I want to just contrast that with what we showed you last year, what our projections were, roughly 50 million at the end of five years. And we're going to go, and we're going to, our decision was to present to you to stay true to what we promised last year, or do a little bit better. So we are going to show you more projects, but we did not want to increase the debt to do that. So that's, what we're trying to do here is at least be true to what we said last year and/or a little better, and that's what we've done. So a quick look back, when I first came here, I think we met with you all individually, and we talked about why the debt was as high as it was, and what we could maybe do about it. And it seemed pretty daunting at the time. Michael Thompson was here as the public works director at the time. He was very helpful in telling me about the history of the projects and just going through them and understanding what happened. But he didn't stay too long, and then Steve took over. And it took a little while for him to really get on board with all the things that he had. It took a while to get his position replaced. But we, you know, we got together as soon as we could and started working on it. At the time, we were looking at about $80 million. It was starting to come down, but it was about $80 million in outstanding debt. We had an $8 million deficit in our public improvement project funds on the record, on the books. There was an $8 million deficit. Granted, most of that, probably 6 million of it, was English 36. But it was still a deficit right on our books. We also had a deficit in our state aid, municipal state aid account of 2.4 million. So therefore, you know, we weren't receiving any additional state aid, and they were withholding about 8 million in pending state payments from us because we were too far in arrears. We also had about 8 million in municipal state aid debt, so that was debt that we issued for municipal state aid projects. We will still have some of that debt going forward, but when we get to the next slide, we'll show you where we're at today. We were getting local government aid, but we were primarily using it to pay debt service payments, not to buy down debt, but to pay the actual annual debt service payments. And our streets were not in very good condition. So today, what we're looking at is right now, as of this moment, we have about $58 million in outstanding debt. Part of that is just due to the natural amortization schedule, and part of it is due to some of the incremental changes that we've made, having a small effect. Every one of our deficit projects is paid up and closed off. Steve and I met, and we went through, I think, probably 15 of them. And we looked at the reasons why they were in deficit. We followed up on funding sources, other agencies that hadn't paid what they were supposed to pay. We collected those payments with some help from my staff. We had some surpluses in some newer projects that we were able to use. But the bottom line is, we only have a few active project funds, and those are the ones that we're actually constructing right now. All of the deficit funds have been closed, with the exception of English 36. That will be paid off in January of 2020. There's still a deficit of 748,000, which is a far cry from the 6 million. That will be paid up in January of 2020. There will be a cake out in the lobby. The Public Works Department is going to design a bridge on the cake, and it's going to be a very special day. Been waiting a long time. We also have no more deficit in our municipal state aid account. We are paid up. That allows us, and this is kind of complicated, so I won't go really too deep into it, but that allowed us to collect on that roughly 8 million in pending state aid payments. 4.8 million of it is now available to the city. Some of it went towards English 36, but 4.8 million in those pending payments is now available to the city. And because it was for, you know, some of them, in some cases decades-old projects that were paid with other funding sources, there are no restrictions on it, so we can use it for our local streets. You know, it's very difficult, but it just, it does work that way. We, our state aid debt is about cut in half to 4.2 million. We'll have that until 2024, but we've got a plan to pay for it, and we are levying taxes to pay for it. MSA for state aid streets will be available in about 2026. So we will also, besides local streets, we will also be able to do improvements on the state aid streets, which is 20%.
Yes, so we've-
Can I interrupt for one second? Councilmember Juneman has a question, and I also just wanted to indicate that I think this is so important. You have really done such a fabulous job on putting this together, and this is really important for our community to hear this, all of these positive changes in terms of our financial position. So why don't we plan that we'll just start our meeting a little bit late? I'd rather not just race through all of this so quickly, because this is just too important. So councilmember Juneman has a question.
Actually, it's not a question, it's a comment. Thank you. To put this in a little more perspective, actually, for some of you, and certainly for the people at home, these numbers shrinking like this are phenomenal, if you've been here as long as I have. And in the 90s, there was no street plan. There was no street calendar. There was no way you planted it. Just when something was in horrible shape, it got done. And so that's part of the way we got where we were. But in the other, on the flip side of that, in the early 2000s, it was easier to get projects done, if you will, because there was a dip in the economy, and so it was cheaper to do them. So it's always a balancing act. And for the 36 debt, that was a huge one, but when MINDOT comes along and tells you that they're going to close off a major access point, they're not giving you 10 years to figure it out and pay for it. You either meet them where they are and figure out how you're going to save your community and keep it economically stable, or you just get your road blocked off. So those kinds of decisions come down on top of you, whether you're hoping and they're going to or not. And so I just think all of our staff, from that time and now, deserve a lot of credit for taking that on when we had to, and then you could get it to this point. It's actually quite phenomenal.
It's impressive. Can you please?
And then the next highlighted point, the local government aid being dedicated to streets, that's going to make a really big difference. I've been promising you this since I got here. We were able to wean the local government aid off from the debt payments by slowly working it into the levy as other debt was being paid off. And then, we had to use it a couple of years for some building improvements, but now we're ready to dedicate the entire amount for the street program. So as a consequence, we now have, you know, a good street improvement plan in place. Did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Well, I was just going to comment for state aid, just in case you didn't know, we're allowed to designate 20% of our streets as state aid roads, and those are the roads that are able to receive the MSA money to help fund improvement projects on those roads. So it's not something that we can apply across every street.
Correct. Sorry about that. So when Steve and I got together and first dived into all of this, we kind of looked at each other and said, well, we kind of got our work cut out for us. And what's, again, what's really nice is, you know, being able to work with a colleague who is very professional, and we were able to really kind of drill into the issues fairly quickly and try to, you know, come up with various plans. And engineers and accountants don't speak the same language, but, but you know what, when we, it's just like with anything else in life. We may not see the world in exactly the same way, but there's more in common than there is different. And sometimes we can talk on the phone, and we're talking about the same thing, and we're just talking in different languages. And he'll say, well, I'll send a spreadsheet over to you, and perfect, then I got it. And then I ship it back to him. And so we're able to move back and forth pretty quickly. And that was really, really a pleasure to be able to do that so expeditiously, because it doesn't always happen that way. So we're really happy about it. So for this five-year CIP, what's really so different, and what we're so excited about, of that 4.8 million that we talked about that's now available to us from the state aid, and again, to councilmember Juneman's point, we did fix a lot of streets with debt when the rates were low. So let's, you know, we're celebrating that, but it's not a sustainable model, so that's why we're moving on. But we do have that 4.8 million. 2.8 of it is going to come to us during this five-year plan, and the remainder of it will come in the second part of our 10-year plan. And the local government aid that we've been receiving is about, a little over $900,000 a year, and that added up to about 4.1 million. We've just found out that we're going to get an increase with the new legislative, legislation that just was signed. And that was another $227,000 a year that has not even been figured in here. So, I mean, we have, you know, more work that can be done. And the 3.1 million in additional franchise fee revenue over the five-year period, all of that adds up to about $10 million. So that's a big number in five years. We had a lot of obstacles along the way. I think maybe Steve would be better to explain some of those.
Sure. So like everything, there's price increase. So we've certainly seen that this year with our, some of our projects that we've bid out. You have increasing costs for materials such as asphalt. And I'm going to bring you back to that slide there where we had the teeter-totter with, you know, how do you balance more projects without increasing debt levels? So more projects generally would mean more debt, more assessments, more streets to fund. Even with, you know, this 10 million, if we keep doing things the way we were, you're still talking about more debt, because you're still bonding for some of those items. Also, more projects means more utility contributions. And I tip my hat to Elliot this with, you know, having a 10-year plan so that you're looking, you know, even farther out than what is required, helps you really kind of make sure that as you're laying out these projects, that we're actually in a sustainable mode. And then, you know, one of the advantages of having a five-year plan that gets revised every year is we can react to changes. So it's not, you're not locked in and stuck with that five-year plan. And a good representation of that is the County Road B gas main utility project that is going on out here. Next year, it's going to be going on in our west area, and there's two streets there that we're watching as a future CIP project. They've got, they need it. The conditions need it. Well, that project's going to disrupt about half of the street. So the question is, do you just put back half-new street and half really bad old street? Or do you take this opportunity to find a way to have a project so when it gets all done, it's one interruption, and it's one project? So sometimes, as councilmember Juneman said, things come up. And, you know, the advantage of having a plan that you look at every year is you can react to those.
Okay, so the real heart of our presentation tonight kind of revolves around, you know, that new 10 million in funding that's in addition to what we would normally have, and kind of what we're doing with it. We wanted to, you know, leverage that money in the best way possible so that it would, you know, we'd get the most bang for our buck. So I have a couple of slides that I'm going to go back and forth on, because it's a little bit of a difficult concept, especially if you're not familiar with how special assessments work. So what we're proposing to do is we would be financing our special assessments through a revolving fund, a revolving street fund, rather than borrowing. So what normally happens is the city will issue debt for various components of the street project. The homeowners or benefited properties will be charged a special assessment, and they will pay that either all upfront, or typically over like 15 years with interest. So they pay that money to the city. The city uses that money to pay off the debt. So what I've done in a lot of communities, and what a lot of other communities do, is they finance that upfront. And then that way, the city's earning the interest and putting into a revolving street fund, and it allows them to do more with the money, more with their street projects. And so we've never really had the luxury of being able to do that, because there just wasn't any money laying around, just waiting for that to happen. So now we have a really good base to draw from, so we were able to put a plan together to leverage a portion of that additional revenue to kind of start this process off. So typically, our assessments would be, and correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, it could be anywhere from 4 million to a million, or even a million and a half possibly, that we would be borrowing per year. So we're, with the exception of the first few projects, we'll be taking that and funding those by ourselves. And then the city will earn interest, and it all revolves back to us. Some property owners will pay everything upfront, but in our model, we have calculated that no one will pay upfront, so that we have the worst possible scenario, so that everyone will be paying back in 15 years with interest. Now typically, we would be charging 5%, which is 2% above roughly what our bond rate would be, but that discussion hasn't happened yet. We will have to decide whether or not we want to give the benefited property owners a break on the interest. It's, that's a policy decision. We may want to lower it and give them a little bit of benefit as well. But in either case, the city will be earning interest, depending on what the rate is. At 5%, we would earn an additional 4.6 million in interest. And this was calculated through a 15-year street assessment model, where the assessments for these projects would be paid back over 15 years. So then we would utilize that interest. Rather than paying it to the bondholders, we'd utilize that interest to put back into the roads. The total revolving revenue, once this thing gets rolling, it really starts picking up steam. It takes two or three years to really start working. But after, at the end of the 15-year period at the height, you know, it'll be, it'll be in excess of a million and a half per year. So that's all pay-as-you-go money that we'll be putting towards the street. So I'm going to go to the next slide to just try to illustrate, and we can always go back. So what's happening here is, if you look at the slices of this pie, and I'll start up at the top where it says utility fund contributions, because I want to emphasize again that everything on that side of the pie that's connected is all now pay-as-you-go. So the utility fund contributions are all being paid with cash. We're not borrowing money in this CIP for the next 10 years for anything, any component that is a utility component for the streets. The franchise fees are obviously, that's cash, to put down on the project. And the intergovernmental revenue is also, you know, enhanced because of the local government aid, but that's, you know, that's cash. So that leaves special assessments and the other portion of the project that we levy against the entire city tax base. So this would pull special assessments out of the debt and make it a cash contribution, taking that 14%. This is just a rough, looking at roughly this year's street projects. It could change. These percentages could change. But it takes that slice of the pie away from the debt and puts it out and pay-as-you-go. And then what we have left then is that remaining 28%, roughly a quarter of the project that we still are borrowing money for. And we'll move on to that in the next couple of slides.
So just so everyone's clear, we're still saying special assessments will be part of the funding source. It's just, how does the city fund the special assessments?
Correct. Thank you, Steve. I get to talking kind of fast, so I'm glad that he's here. I don't know if we need to go back to this or not. Is there anything, anybody wanted to ask about that before we move on? I want to show you the impact that it, that we're projecting that it will have on the debt in the 10-year, if you wanted anything clarified before I move on.
I think it's, there are no questions up here. I think it's absolutely visionary that we are doing this, and totally flipping the way that we, that we view ourselves financially. I really appreciate this, your presentation and your efforts on this.
It's a C chain.
There aren't any questions up here?
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, councilmember Knutson.
It looks like, it looks incredible. Where does, where does all the cash come from?
Well, the utility funds are in good, they have good cash position. We plan it that way. We fund, we fund it through our rate system, which incorporates depreciation, and that's what pays for the infrastructure. The franchise fees come from the gas and electric, and the intergovernmental revenue is primarily going to be local government aid, but there's also some MSA construction aid in there. And the special assessments ultimately comes from the benefited property owners. from the benefited property owners, but we would normally bond for it and have to get the cash through bonding. But in this way, we're going to upfront the cash and not borrow. So that'll reduce-
Are they a reliable source, the assessments?
Yeah. It's tax, death or taxes. I mean, you pay, if you don't pay, your property gets forfeited. So in the first year, just as an example, Councilmember, in the first year of collections, the city could expect to receive over ninety-nine percent, usually about ninety-nine point four percent of property taxes that were levied and special assessments. So the collection rate is high, and then the remainder of it gets collected over the next five years, or the property will forfeit. So yes, it's reliable.
Wow. Thank you.
And so what this does, if you look at, you know, we talked about trying to stay true to the five-year projection of debt being at around forty-nine million to fifty million. You really see this working as, as those special assessments start rolling in, in that tenth year, bringing the debt down to roughly thirty-nine million is what we're projecting. And I want to just compare and contrast that with last year, what we told you was around forty-eight million. So, you know, you're kind of seeing that ten million dollar reduction in that period, and it actually starts even gaining more traction and picking up more steam after that. So we'll, we'll get back to that, but right now, Steve's going to talk a little bit about what's actually happening with the projects that are included.
Yes, so for the five-year CIP, we're looking at twenty-three point four miles of street reconstruction. This is both full reconstruction and street reclamation. So when we think about our one hundred and thirty-five miles of streets, that's roughly seventeen percent of our roads in the next five years that we'll be doing projects on. This is an increase of four point three miles over what we had in the five-year CIP last year. So again, we're trying to keep that balance of debt, but doing more. One of the other things that we're going to start doing, or look to start doing, is spot paving. So I know we went, came before council recently and asked for, to use about eighty thousand of our street revitalization fund for spot paving. And this has been a pretty successful way to provide temporary relief to residents in areas where we're not going to be in there right away with a CIP project. But it also is a relief to our staff, too, who might have to go out to that same spot three or four times throughout the year. And so we're looking at making a recommendation of including that as an annual line item, so that we can have this at the start of the spring, so when we have these bad areas that pop up from the winter, that we're able to get out there and do that right away, provide the best relief for residents. And again, you know, it's a long-term bandage until, you know, we are in there with a street project. I have another slide. So for 2020, Dennis McClellan area, street improvements, it's about two miles. It's, that's our full street reconstruction project. Then we have the Schaller area, it's about two point four miles. Again, this is our street reclamation project, where we're grinding up the pavement. And then the Arcade and County Road B, this is the project that I mentioned that is where the gas lines are going to be at. So I have met with Excel. We're looking at being able to time things and work together to have this be, seem like one project, even though it's going to be their project and our project. And we're going to be looking at bringing that forward to council to start looking at having a consultant help us with that project, be able to really meet the timeline that would have to be for that. And then, again, this demonstrates that flexibility I'm talking about, where each year we do reevaluate it, because things like this do come up, and then we do have to find solutions for them. So overall, in 2020, we're proposing to do about five point nine miles of street. So on average, I would say we typically average about three and a half miles. So, you know, in 2020, this will be a significant jump up here for us.
So that County Road B project did put us back a little bit with our debt reduction strategy for that year, and we knew that, but it just only made sense to do that project when the timing was right. And so we kind of, we caught up with it in the later years. I want to mention as well that all of these projects and all of these, or all of these projections that we've been showing you are subject to a little bit of change. We have a ten-year plan done, but we have more projects yet to put in that second five-year. We know that we have ten million dollars left in the fund in, at the end of ten years. So we know that we've got to filter in more projects, and it'll change everything just a little bit. But every year, we're just going to continue to have this balanced talk and figure out, you know, what's the right balance with the city council. Are you satisfied with the debt at this level? And so, you know, we do have a lot of flexibility yet, and a lot of plans that are yet to be made in that second half of the CIP, but this will be an ongoing discussion.
Councilmember Knutson has a question?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a quick question. As I paged ahead in, in all this equipment that we're looking at, there was a street paver in there. So my question is, if you were, if you saw this opportunity with, with the gas project, could you accelerate a capital improvement that would make that go better? I mean, is that something that would typically would be a process that you would?
So Mayor and Council, that's exactly what we're proposing to do with that Arcade and County Road B project. The paver itself that we're talking about is for like the spot paving, you know, if we have an area that's bad, that's the piece of equipment we use for that. I would say, I know we're talking a lot about streets, but I just want to touch back on what Mayor Abrams talked about as far as asset management, whether it be streets, buildings, it's always going to need investment, right? It's always going to need upkeep. Things are going to get old, and we're going to have to replace. And where I think we get in the most trouble is when we, we stop, and then there's a period of time, and now you're trying to catch up, and catch up is always harder, so.
Thank you.
So we'll try to move on as quickly as we can here. Just to recap a little bit about what we talked about when we did franchise fees, if remember, we increased the franchise fees, and that was primarily a debt reduction strategy. However, you know, it's, it's worked out that it's all part of this big story. Even though we, you know, we had to, we had to kind of reorganize things with the County Road B project, it's all part of this, this whole plan. So the, the point of this is, is when we talked about having this, this foundation in these four corners, you know, we've got solid information about the municipal state aid, the franchise fees, we're about at the maximum that we can do with that. And the special assessments were pretty much kind of at the maximum on what we'd be charging for that. So that final contribution there from the municipalities, it'd be the city contribution, basically just wanted to touch on that just a little bit, because that's what we're looking for, for the future. So the municipal contributions could be utility fund revenues. As we talked about, we have a ten-year plan, so we know, we know we're good on all of our utility funds, environmental, sewer, WAC. Interest revenue accrues on all of those fund balances, so that goes towards the project as well. And so property tax revenue would be our next step to getting fully to a pay-as-you-go system for streets. So as our debt payments start to decrease, our annual debt service starts to decrease, we can capture that capacity and levy a tax to put into the street fund, to eventually get to a pay-as-you-go model and save about a million seven in interest payments annually. So that's, that's kind of a future step that we're setting, we're setting up for. We may not, I mean, as I look around the room, I don't know how many of us are still going to be rattling around City Hall when that actually happens. But, you know, we're, we're doing our job by making it possible, and you'll be making some future council look very good. Very quickly, again, these are going to change a little bit. We anticipate debt service levies. If we did no projects, our, that bottom line, the red line, would be how our debt service would be paid off very quickly, but because we still have to issue debt to do some of these projects, we're still going to see incremental progress. But again, I just want to point out that these numbers were calculated using an interest rate probably much higher than what we're actually going to get when we sell all of these bonds. So we'll come back at you with this. But just to show that we're still watching, that we're making that progress as, as we chart these projects. Then this next slide was basically just as a comment, that we see this as sort of just setting a new direction, and moving towards a different, more sustainable model. Did you have anything to add?
Yeah, I think when we look back at when we started, how do we tackle this big problem? We kept using the analogy of like turning a large ship. You know, you don't turn a large ship on a dime. You start making incremental changes, and it's slowly over time, you start turning, before you, before you know it, you found that you have actually turned that large ship. So I think that's kind of the, you know, while we're looking at short-term stuff, we've also had that big-term vision that we've been striving for.
Okay, so to wrap it up, our measure of how we're, how we're measuring ourselves as far as our outstanding debt was decided that we were going to use our standard and pores ratings. They have two different ratings. The first one is measuring our debt against our revenue. So if we take a look at all of our outstanding debt, or net direct debt, compared to total revenues, with the red line being the revenues and the outstanding debt, the ratio brings us to adequate in 2025, which is, I believe, about a year earlier than what we said last year. So we think we're still kind of on the mark for what we were telling you about when we were going to actually move the needle on that rating. We're doing more projects, but we still wanted to, you know, at least project any way that we were going to meet that goal by the end of this period. And the same goes for the other standard and pores ratio. That's the ratio of governmental funds debt service to expenditures. And that is also projected to be about a year earlier. That'll move to strong, from adequate to strong, in about 2024. We don't know exactly, but that's what we're projecting. So that's really important, because then, you know, especially that first one that brings us from weak to adequate, that's really important. And once that happens, you know, the pressure's kind of off a little bit, and you can have a little bit more flexibility. But very important to, to get that, to get our debt down to a sustainable level, and one that our rating agency can be, you know, can be proud of. So with that, we're wrapping it up. We just want, if you had any feedback, are we hitting the right mark for outstanding debt? Did you want us to be more aggressive with debt, more aggressive with projects? Did we get the right balance? You have any, you know, comments on the projects that are moving forward in 2020? It's a new direction, and we're pretty excited.
Thank you very much for your presentation. It truly is amazing. I mean, this really is stewardship of our community resources and our residents' taxes, and the balance that you've been able to strike, I think it's spot on from my perspective. It really is quite amazing, having been on the council a little while, and seeing how having an asset management plan, and having a financial, the guardrails, that, the policy that we established on our debt, how all of that really works together to put us into this kind of position where we can be more proactive with our streets. So with that, I know that we're running a little bit late. I know City Manager Coleman had a question that she wanted to ask the council.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Abrams, members of the city council. First of all, I just would like to commend Steve and Ellie for the great work they've done on this. I met with them, I think maybe even three weeks ago, to go through this, and it was just mind-blowing how much progress we've made in such a short time. So thank you so much for your hard work. What I wanted to ask the council is, there's another couple of hundred pages in your packet, which we haven't discussed tonight. And so I wondered if you would like to have us come back to the next workshop, and maybe just go over some of the actual nuts and bolts of the plan. The planning commission likes to look at this in great detail, and I think that before they see it, it would be, or at least about the same time, you're seeing it as well.
I think, I see everyone's head nodding. I think that would be very important. I don't want to just skip over that, because that's an important element, that we all understand that as well. So perhaps-
May I suggest that you keep this, though, so we don't have to kill another tree for the next meeting?
Yes, happy to do that.
All right. Well, yeah, except for Brian, he doesn't kill trees. But that would be great. We'll, we'll plan on that.
We'll finish it up at our next meeting. And with that, I will adjourn at 7:15 our workshop. Why don't we take-